To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good to see everybody there, everybody here today. First item on the agenda tonight is to entertain a motion to approve the agenda as posted and sent to the news media twenty-four hours prior.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Mr. Blanford, second by Mr. Palmer. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item is the council workshop for Monday. I won't read it to you. It'll take us a while. So if anybody wants to review that, that is available online on the website. Next up, we have the public comment. Looks like we have one registered in advance, Lisa Rodriguez, all right, with the Relay for Life.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I don't know if you all know or not, but I am the new event chair for Relay for Life Franklin County, and I just wanted to kind of give you an update as to what's been happening since I took over that position. We've set a date for Relay for 2025. It will be September the thirteenth out at the Wellness Center from eleven-thirty to four. We took a poll on Facebook this year to see what the people wanted, and we gave them a couple of different months to choose from, and a couple of different days of the week, and some different timeframes, and this seemed to be when they wanted to have it, not have it in July like we usually do. So we're going to try that and see if we can have a better turnout. Numbers were a little low last year. The Wellness Center has graciously allowed us to have it there for the next two years, because it is in our town this next two years. I've been working with La Luz in conversations with them, as one of my goals is to close the gap with the Hispanic community and our community, and try and bring us together more as one, and try to get them more involved with our Relay for Life. As cancer hits everybody, it's not just our community, it's everybody. And this isn't just our community, it's their community, it's our community, to make it a more community event. And with that being said, they are going to start attending our meetings with Relay, and I'm going to start attending their board meetings and try and figure out ways to close that gap a little more. For Relay this year, I'm going to do, trying to get it more family-oriented, and so we're going to do a color contest this year, and my honorary chair family is going to judge those pictures. We're going to involve the elementary students, the daycares, the in-home daycares, preschools, and my honorary chair family is going to then judge those pictures, award winners, and we're going to invite those kids to Coaches vs. Cancer in January, which that will be held on the twenty-fifth here in town, and then we will award their prizes to them, and... Lost my train of thought. Sorry, guys. At that time, I'll introduce the honorary chair family at that time. I'm kind of keeping it under wraps till then. Back to Relay itself, we would like to have some food trucks here to have some Hispanic cultured food, but also to have some American cultured food, so we have a diversity of both. I've contacted food trucks from Eagle Grove, from Belmont, and one coffee truck out of Rockwell. Sherry Bog has contacted a truck out of Dumont and two other places. We've got commitments out of a few of them already. Some of them we're waiting to hear back on. With that being said, this is a community event to raise awareness for cancer and to raise money for cancer. I feel that it's a great cause, or I wouldn't be doing what I'm doing right now. I feel that because it's a great cause, and these food trucks are not here in town just to be in town, they were invited by us to be here. They will be gone from, after four o'clock, they're gone. They're not coming back unless they're asked to again, probably. I humbly ask the council to consider waiving the fifty-dollar fee for them to be there as it is a great cause. It's... I just humbly ask you guys to consider waiving their fifty-dollar fees that they would have to pay. And again, it's not like they're just coming into town to roll into town and stay here for a few hours and then go home. We've invited them to come and help us raise money, because a portion of whatever they raise, they're giving back to us, the Relay for Life. So I just humbly ask you to consider that. That's about all I got for you.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Is there, for those that don't know, how do you guys go about donating to Relay for Life? Do you have a Facebook page? Do you have a website?
Yes, we do have a Facebook page. You can, depending on how you want to donate, if you're writing a check, you can make it out to Franklin County Relay for Life, and I can leave you my information, and you can get it to me, and then I can get it into the proper hands.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Any other questions?
I just wanted to add, you know, it is a good cause. I support it, and we've got a lot of time as we're working up to that.
Yes, sir.
And we will definitely put this on a future workshop, and if you guys give me more details at that point, you know, to maybe bring them in, and we'll schedule that, and then we can discuss it more openly.
Okay. Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, Lisa.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment while we're here?
I guess I got one other comment. Our theme is going to be superheroes, hence why I'm wearing my cape.
I wondered, I wondered if there was something going to go on tonight, but I didn't.
Yes, and actually, closer to the time, I'm going to invite the public to wear their favorite superhero costumes out to Relay.
All right. Sounds fun to me. All right, not hearing any, no more public comment, we'll move on. Next, public heating hearing, we don't have any of those today. Old business, we'll take care of that, so we don't have any new. Next item is good new business, and this is for the image of pride for October 2024. Mr. Palmer.
Yep, you bet. October was my month, and driving around town, a lot of very, very well-kept properties, I really enjoy seeing all of them, and kind of driving just through the middle of town, and I had to go to Dave and Mary's house the other day for something, and, you know, thought how nice their property looked, and then we were talking, and they just had had their concrete all water blasted, and got all that looking nice. They got a very, very nice backyard area, looked really nice. They put up, as everybody's knees get older, they put up railings on their steps, so we can hold on to a railing now when we come out of the house, and they're probably the only people in town I know who could open up their garage door and have people say, "Wow." Everything in its place, shelving, everything. You know, if I opened up my garage door, they'd call the police. It's just a mess. But anyway, I nominate this month's image of pride would be for Dave and Mary Booth of Hampton at nine-twenty-seven Federal Street North.
So we have a motion by Mr. Palmer to award the image of pride to Dave and Mary.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Blanford. Any further discussion at that point? Not? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Their image of pride awarding.
Have you guys come up and take some pictures?
This evening.
Get some certificates and...
Apologize for that.
That's all right.
Hips and knees replaced, and where do you want it?
Just do it down there.
Okay.
Just go down there.
I can do steps all right.
We kind of pose people by the flag.
Okay. And I apologize again for not standing at the pledge.
Don't worry. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, here's a certificate.
Ken, why don't you take a picture?
There's several paper books.
We'll have another picture real quick.
Ready?
Yeah.
All right, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right.
Thanks a lot.
All right. Moving along. The next item on our agenda is the fiscal year twenty-four financial report. Mr. Dunt.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the annual financial report. This is basically just a report of all the revenues and expenditures for fiscal year twenty-four that ended June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-four, and this report has been put together and published in the Hampton Chronicle, and so upon your acknowledgement, we will submit it to the state. It's due December first, so we're early, but that's good. It's one less thing we'll have to do before December first. Any questions?
Wish it was in more detail.
Well, it's...
It's just like generic. You don't know what...
Yeah, I mean, it's...
What's going where?
The full report is ten pages long of, I mean, I can give you a copy of it.
Well, if you, I'd like to look at the copy sometime. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Mr. Dunt? If not, I would entertain a motion to, for the fiscal year twenty-four, annual financial and political report.
I'll second.
Mr. Hodge, I have a motion by Mr. Hodge, second by Mr. Davies. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item, we have a request from chamber for the road closures for Halloween Howl. I don't see...
He's not here, so he asked me to speak for him. Can I sit here?
Jerry Greifey. We've got a microphone. Let's do that.
This is, the road closures are exactly what they were last year. I think last year went very, very well. They've got lots of activities planned for Halloween Howl, and you can see from, oh, Highway Three, all the way down to Second Avenue, the corner where my shops are, that whole street, part of First Street will be closed. Between Federal and First Street will be closed, and then the street in front of the movie theater closed. They do trunk-or-treat around the courthouse, then all the businesses, of course, do trick-or-treat. The Windsor Theater has the Haunted House. We're going to have something going on in Peace Plaza, the Chili Cook Off in Peace Plaza, and then photo ops in the ceramic studio. So lots going on. I think it went very well last year. In fact, it was better last year because the streets were closed. It was much safer, a lot more fun.
Great.
Yeah, I think it's important we have the streets closed, because there's so many people, and they're all over, which is great.
All right. If there's no further questions for Ms. Greifey, we'll entertain a motion to approve the chamber request for road closures during Halloween.
I move we approve.
Yeah, motion by Mr. Davies.
I'll second that.
Second by Ms. Greifey. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item, we have the rural housing... I said to say this Monday night, too, the grant agreement for to have the city mayor, manager, sign that. Mr. Dunt, did you have any more information?
Yeah, this is the Rural Housing Needs Assessment Grant Agreement. So this is the document that we must sign and submit to the state stating that we agree with the grant award and the terms of it. So it is a grant for twenty thousand dollars, cash match of ten thousand dollars. This is kind of like a year and a half-long process. The first step is working with Iowa State University Economic Development Division, where we will put together a workshop process with a committee. So it's going to be kind of a long process, but this kicks it off. First thing we got to do is sign this grant agreement and get it submitted.
All right. Any further questions other than what we just discussed on Monday? If not, would entertain a motion to acknowledge the Rural Housing Needs Assessment Grant, and so authorize city manager to sign.
So moved.
I'll second it.
Motion by Mr. Palmer, second by Ms. Greifey. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item, entertain a motion to approve claims as submitted by staff in the amount of one hundred seventy thousand eight hundred twenty-three dollars and ninety-nine cents.
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Palmer, second by Mr. Lamos. In favor?
Can I make a comment?
Yep, go ahead.
Sorry, apologize for that. So in the claims is a claim for two thousand dollars. That is for a used street sweeper. I think about a week ago, Barry sent me a link to a Facebook Marketplace sale. There was a street sweeper for sale, used one, and so we looked into it, and it was, they were asking twenty-five hundred dollars, and it was up by Albert Lee, Minnesota. Doug and I called the guy on speakerphone. We had a conversation with him. He purchased it at the Richie Brothers Auction. We were intrigued enough to set up an appointment to go up and look at it at that price. Now, if you recall, Doug has talked about, our street sweeper is not in a condition to sweep the streets this fall, so we're looking at renting one for a year until we budget to purchase one. So renting one this fall for thirty days was thirteen thousand five hundred dollars. So we thought, well, if this is good enough to get us through one fall at least, at twenty-five hundred, we will have saved eleven thousand dollars. So Doug and I and Chris, an employee, we went up and looked at it on Tuesday, yeah, and it ran good, started right up, mechanically looks sound, and so I made him an offer of two thousand, and he accepted it, and so we're picking it up tomorrow. So it's a used street sweeper. Just wanted to point that out. Hopefully, it'll be a good deal. We'll see.
Good. Thank you.
Yeah. Is it a fairly good size, or? It's, so what it is, of course, the one we have now is a VAC all, it's a chassis, looks like a truck.
Yep.
This is an Elgin, what sometimes called a Pelican.
Mm-hmm.
So it's wide up front, narrow in the back, and it's a nineteen ninety-seven, so it's, you know, it's got some age to it, but frankly, it looked older than that, so, so anyway, yeah, we're going to give it a roll.
Well, thank you.
Yeah.
I appreciate you looking at that run. You know, the city has so much specialized equipment. Half the time it's sitting, and that's not good for it. So for this price, maybe if we, if it conks out on us, we can sell the engine for two thousand.
Yeah, yeah, it's a John Deere diesel engine, so, yeah. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? All right, then we have a motion by Mr. Palmer, second by Mr. Lamos. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item up is the ordinance four oh four. This is the, adding chapter twenty fifty-two noise to the municipal code. This will be the second reading of the normal ordinance. Mr. Dunt.
Yeah, so I won't read this in its entirety, but this basically sets a table of decibel levels that are acceptable within residential district, commercial district, and industrial district. And this is the second reading, and Pat, I know, at the last reading indicated he wanted to get together with the chief, and they're working on that. I know they've been communicating the last couple of days, so before we get to the third reading, hopefully that'll happen.
Tomorrow morning, you're going to go out and...
Great, great.
Find a few noisy things, maybe get husband and wife screaming at each other, and some other stuff, and what the noise is.
Any questions?
Nope. If there are no further questions, for the second route, I'd entertain a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance four zero four.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Mr. Hodge, second by Mr. Palmer. This is a roll call vote. Mr. Davies?
Aye.
Mr. Hodge?
Aye.
Mr. Lamos?
Aye.
Mr. Blanford?
Aye.
Mr. Palmer?
Aye.
Ms. Greifey?
Aye.
All right, second reading is passed. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. This is approving the previous minutes for Thursday, September twenty-second of twenty-six, twenty twenty-four, regular session. Scheduling this next regular session for Thursday, October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four, at six P.M. in the city council chambers, and approve alcohol licensing for Turner Whipple Pharmacies, one oh four, Third First Street, Northwest Hampton. I'd entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Greifey?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Lamos. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Brings us to our staff reports. Chief Morrison.
Yeah, we had a busy week last week. I think we had about nine criminal cases on Leah's desk from last week alone, and that wasn't including some school safety concerns we spent a lot of time up there dealing with. So we had a busy week last week, trying to get caught up this week. We did have a court hearing today on a property in the two-hundred-block Third Street Northeast that is, and we're still working on hiring. We have about five applicants out. We got to send out some more advertising, but that whole process kind of got stalled with last week's stuff, but hoping to hit it hard next week. Otherwise, just questions.
Any questions, Mr. Blanford?
Is that three strikes and you're out?
We're tired of cleaning it up, I can tell you that.
Is that assessed to taxes?
Yes, yeah.
So is there one where, is it the normal fee every time, or is it?
It's a progressive fee.
Okay, so if they get hit again, then it'll be?
It's, I'd have to look. I'm not sure what it is, but it's high, it gets higher every time.
Okay. I just feel that it should, if they're...
It's like two hundred, five hundred thousand, something to that matter.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Palmer?
I guess I think that you'd left last council meeting, you had something going on, and I had to give my council report. Anyway, I was talking about being at the League of Cities, and it seems like everybody's got a thing to brag about, you know, we got a new this, they got a new that, and everybody kind of goes around and talks about the cool stuff they had and what they can brag about. And somebody asked me, "What are you bragging about?" And I said, "Well," I said, "I think our police department is something we brag about."
Thank you.
I said that we had made national news over a stupid ignorant thing, and I said, "Within three days, our police officers had made an arrest," and some other things, and then over Labor Day weekend, a couple of clowns decided to go out and make sure everybody's cars were unlocked and steal some stuff, and even that night, you guys got them the same night. And then with the school garbage that's going on up there, and it's just, really appreciate what you guys do, and it's just phenomenal. I don't know why we have to be in such positions sometimes, but it's, if we are, I'm glad we got you guys to help.
I appreciate it. It's been hard to keep up. We've been plugging away, trying to get it all done, and we've been utilizing our partners, the sheriff's office and now in the state, so we're glad we got all that stuff taken care of.
Excellent. Any else? All right.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Tar.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. The twenty twenty-four street project basically is about, I'd say it's ninety-eight percent complete. They did pull traffic control earlier this week. However, kind of double-edged sword there, they pulled that, and they still haven't swept those streets and got them cleaned up real good yet. Earlier this week, I'd spoken to Heartland Asphalt about that, and said, "Hey, we got to get on that this week." I was gone at a conference today, so I haven't had a chance to check, but hopefully they were there today and tomorrow. They did say they'd be here Thursday or Friday this week to get those cleaned up and buttoned up. Pool painting projects, hundred percent complete. The slide project and the repairs to the slide are completed. The water main project, still going strong, but I'd say that's about eighty percent complete. They're still up on Twelfth Avenue right now. They had a little snafu today, but it's still going well. Casey sidewalk project is grade-staked and ready to go. I anticipate starting that here this, early this next week. Banshell, you'll see the guys have been working up there a little bit, too. We're replacing some sidewalks up there. We had some trip hazards in those, and with, you know, all the use the banshell gets, we're just trying to get some things done prior to the winter. I can't remember what that's called, but...
Light up.
Yeah, the light parade and all that good stuff for that winter fest. And then, so the guys are working on some sidewalk repair there. The banshell arch project, which we'll be working with R E C, they're leading that project. We'll be working with them a little bit on getting those pilings done to put their arches back up, and then the new arches they're going to install. We haven't forgot about alley maintenance in the fall yet. We want to get to that yet. We're just, we've got a lot going on, and not a lot of days left, I'm sure, but we're trying. Tree moving project for the skate park, we've got that hired out. I think Ron touched on that the other day. I'm anticipating the next week or two that they'll be working on those. The tree boards also, kind of working with these guys as far as placement, location, and where, and it's going really good. It's Mike Hartman, Danny Carlson's son-in-law, so they do it for, I believe it's three hundred an hour, but they can move four trees in an hour, so I think, you know, it's not going to be too expensive. Working on new burn site planning with Ron, and having some discussion with the county engineer as well. Stump removal bid packets are out, and they're due October twenty-third, so we can maybe get that assigned. Their deadline to get all those completed this year will be March twenty-eighth. We leave a very big window through the wintertime on those, because we, the bigger the window, typically the cheaper the cost. So we're hoping to get multiple bids on that, keeping the price down. Last year, we got really fortunate, so we'll see what happens this year. Tree bid packets for the work to be completed in the cemetery, still kind of working on that, but we have a lot of trees out of the cemetery currently marked. You'll see caution tape on those right now. Now we're working on putting the map together. Now we're working on putting the map together with that so we can get a bid packet put together for that project. And then right away trees, Nate's done a good job down at the street department getting some of that stuff ready for me, too. We just got to get it in a packet form and a map ready. And then today I attended the Fall Water Conference up at NIAC with staff and Ron attended that today as well. And that was always interesting and probably be bringing some information forward on that here in the near future for discussion. And then the asbestos testing this week got completed already at 256th Street Southwest on that house garage. And then, so we'll wait for the results. I'm hoping to see results sometime late next week. And then that'll let us know if we have to then bid out abatement for any asbestos remediation or something. And then 308th Street Southwest, where we have a court order to demo a garage, that was also tested. I don't anticipate having asbestos in that, but we still have to do that. So anyway, other than that, lot going on. I'll entertain any questions or concerns y'all may have.
Mr. Lamos?
The sides walks at Banshell, are they drilling dowels in there?
Are they drilling dowels and tying in? I'll have to check with Nate. We typically would do that, yeah.
So keep it from rising?
Right, yeah, we typically would.
Was there sewer problems this week or were we just trying out a new sewer jet or?
We're trying out a new sewer jet and that's the second one we've looked at. And I was very impressed with this one. This one actually came in very, very good under budget, so to speak. So we're going to take a look at that, though. I
That'll have a camera on it and?
No, actually, the camera systems now, these jetters are not doing that. It's kind of gotten to where they're not doing that anymore because when they did that, the lines were always getting beat up so bad. So what they do now is they've been utilizing communities our size, especially are utilizing what's called a push camera. So it's just another separate item that you clean it and then you could put the push camera through it. And they have them in 200 and 300 foot increments, I think. So we're also looking at that as part of the package to go with the jetter possibly.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Tar? Not hearing any.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Dunn?
Yeah, and I was present for the demonstration of the sewer jetter. And it's interesting how the footprint of the trailer and jetter itself has shrunk with these newer ones. Our older one is a lot, you know, the trailer's longer, the tank is steel, it's heavy, it's just bulky, you know, there's just, it just seems like a lot of bulk. These newer ones, it's a smaller trailer, it's plastic water tanks, which are lighter and so you can pull them with, you know, you don't have to have as heavy a duty a truck, but it was interesting. The military vehicle parade, I think, went well. That was nice to have them in town. I've been drafting burn site waivers for property owners within a half a mile of what our proposed burn site out by south of the concrete plant that the city owns. Property owners within a half a mile will have to sign those. And as Doug mentioned, I attended the DNR presentation on drinking water regulations. They basically gave an update on EPA regulations and DNR regulations. And of course, the DNR is the enforcement arm for EPA regulations. So that was interesting. It just seems like there's always more and more regulations. So the staff keeps up on it. I wanted to be present just to hear some of it myself, so. Also, at the next workshop, we'll be hearing, hopefully from Mark Crawford on some options for 6th Street Northwest Bridge. And then we'll be discussing Iowa Public Agency Investment Trust, which is an organization, which is basically an additional option for cities' funds. You know, we have funds in the bank, CDs and things like that. We're limited by Iowa code on what we can do with our surplus funds as they're sitting, you know, in waiting to be spent on projects or operations. So we'll hear from that organization. I think that's all unless anybody has any questions.
Is that old sewer jet worth anything trade in?
It might be because we've done some work to it. And I don't know about trade in, if we, either that or sell it outright ourselves. But there's some value.
Do you happen to remember the hours and the miles on that sweeper?
The one we just bought, the sweeper?
20,000.
Yeah.
How many miles is on our sweeper now?
The chassis is only like 65,000.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Move to our council reports. We'll start with Mr. Davies.
Yeah, the Bel Air de Moine will be coming to Hampton, the Arts Council in cooperation. We received a grant from the Iowa Economic Development and Arts Midwest. It'll be here on October 20th. It's a celebration of art and identity. And it sort of goes along with what Lisa was saying. There's going to be a community meal, it's invite only just because of limited space at La Luz after that event. And then the council has all been invited, so we need to RSVP by tomorrow if you want to attend that. And then the other thing was, my brother lived in, lives in Tampa, Florida area and thank goodness it is, there wasn't a lot of damage to his house, he just lost some shingles. But I just really feel for Florida and I'm glad we live in Iowa. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Blandford?
I believe they got a burn ban in place. And just keep in mind for people having recreational fires, that type of stuff. Roads are real dusty, so if you're traveling on gravel roads, those intersections, we haven't had a lot of rain. So just keep in mind for them guys harvesting, that dust doesn't seem like it settles very much. So just be careful out there if you're traveling out in the country, especially at night. You got the headlights and stuff, but during the day, kind of dangerous. That's basically about all I got.
All right, thank you. Mr. Lamos?
I guess I'd like to comment on Ron and Doug looking at that street sweeper that, you know, all of us as a council, we always try to look at saving the city money or thinking outside the box. And, you know, our employees are great at fixing stuff and trying to save the city money. So that's just an example. Hopefully things work out great and that'll save us some money. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Mr. Palmer?
All right. The Friends of the Hampton Cemetery have invited me to an event at the cemetery on November 3rd at 2:00 PM. We're going to talk a little bit about cemetery stuff. I guess we're not going to talk about library books, we're going to talk about cemetery stuff, the cemetery. So a little bit about stone straightening and this general maintenance and a little stone cleaning and whatnot. And we're honored to be out there for that. That's going to be November 3rd and it's going to be at 2:00. It's a Sunday at 2:00 at the cemetery. So hope to see you there if you're interested at all in that. I know by that time, hopefully we'll have some, some of the trees down and some of the work done with that. So hopefully it's a safe area out where we're going to be. So that's all I've got.
All right, thank you. Ms. Greifey?
Just continuing to work with the chamber, with the events that we have coming up, the Halloween Howl and the Wine Walk and Light Up the Night. That's been taking up a lot of time and so is my business lately, so it's all I got.
It's like that time of the year, we're going to, we're going to start partying. So let's get busy. Mr. Hodge?
Yeah, at the workshop, we talked about this Habitat for Humanity. I had somebody inquire about that and so I thought, well, I don't need to have Ron look into it. So I thought I'd call Habitat for Humanity. Tell you, there's something else. They're hard to get a hold of, number one. They got some strange hours. I finally got ahold of a woman and oh my God, she started on the city of Hampton and told me that all that stuff was out here in our lobby and everything and she wasn't going to send me. I thought, my God, am I talking to an ex-wife or what is this woman's problem? You know? And either she was talking too fast or I was listening too slow. My God, she never did send me anything. So I waited a while and I was hot. I drove up there, I got ahold of the second woman in charge and she apologized, said, Bill, I'll send you some stuff. Huh, this isn't the next life here. So anyway, waited and waited about a week, called back and never got anything. Called back up there, got ahold of the second lady. She said, I'm sorry, but so-and-so wouldn't let me send you anything. So I got ahold of Ron. Ron had some stuff in his desk and gave it to me. I took it to the individual. I'll back up just a minute. They said, you'll have to have the individual that wants to apply call up here and we'll send her the application. So I went and seen her and I said, I said, now tell me the truth, did you apply to Habitat to Humanity? She said, yes, I did. And so did so-and-so. She said, neither one of us ever got a reply back. So I called Ron two days ago. We still haven't got a reply. You're fired. Would I have told that woman? That's it. Thanks.
All right, thank you. I just got a couple items, a couple items I laid, wrote down today. One's a construction on 12th Avenue that Doug mentioned. They're in front of the high school now. That intersection there on Federal is hairy at best. So everybody's, you know, keep your eye open when you're out there and driving and think there's, they cut it out about half of the intersection today. So my spouse took about herself to count some cars yesterday. So given with the disruptive construction and they can't come down off the highway and the school, yesterday afternoon between 2:45 and 3:00, 15 minutes, went 71 cars went by our house. And this morning from 7:30 to 8:00, 88 cars. So there's a lot of traffic on the north end of town, so watch where you're going. And trying to stay out of their way. I know we've had some, the police officers down there kind of watching in the mornings and afternoons as well, which helps out. And they're starting to notice them signs that gives you speeder, speeder, speed, too. Guy came out of here this afternoon and was ramming up the, up the steel hill. And by the time he got to that sign, he was doing 22, so it worked. I think fire prevention week this week. I just want to thank our fire department company for that, everything that they do for us. We've got a great group of guys. They do what they're, they do what they're supposed to do and they save what they can and we're very blessed to have them. The next item is just, I want to mention the sweeter sweeper as well. And I thank you Doug and Ron for looking into that. Any sweeter sweeper is better than no sweeper. So I thought, I told one guy the other day, I said, we're just going to start handing out brooms, you know, I mean, it's cheap. Just everybody do your own, your own, front of your house.
Sweep it down the road.
Yeah. Hopefully the wind will come up, but I don't know, maybe not. But just keep your property clean and at least your house will look really good. And then the last thing I have, I just found a little bit of a quote back on this, we talked about civility the other day. And I found a little piece on it, which I kind of liked. It says, I get a choice every day, every time I have to open my mouth. It can be, can be with civility, dignity, and grace or not. So just something to think about. You get a choice every time you, every time you open your mouth. So other than that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. I have a motion by Mr. Hodge, second by Mr. Davies. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.